Okay, we are live.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome you to a regular session of the Mayor and Council, the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, January 18th at 7:00 PM by Zoom. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Louis Pollock has resigned. Councilmember Joni Giacchino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Yeah.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
I see her, okay. City staff, Stephen Pocken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Joelle Lenders, Personnel Director, Matthew Gurney, Public Works Director, Doug Taylor, City Planner, Logan Dodd, Operations Manager, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
Thank you, everybody, for joining back into the Zoom. For a moment of silence tonight, I just want us to remember two people that have passed in the last couple of weeks. One, of course, is what I will be doing a proclamation for shortly, would be Snooty Borowick. And another one is Robert Wick. And he up, oh, I'm sorry. And he, of course, managed the Herald Review for a long, long time, our local paper, one of our local papers. And also, we have some of his statues in our park. So if we just take a moment and, and think about their families and passing of these two people that have given a lot to Bisbee. Thanks. All right. Thank you, everybody. For my, I'm gonna skip the pledge of allegiance since I don't have a flag.
I got one.
Oh. Hey, there is one. I stand corrected. If everybody would like to. And we can all see what we're wearing on our bottoms.
No.
If you don't stand up, we're gonna wonder.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
End of this ball with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That's our first. So for my announcements and our proclamation tonight, my first announcement is I just want to put a shout out to everybody that may be watching. And I know it was printed in the Bisbee Observer this last time. But for our boards and commissions, as you'll see when we get to, to the consent agenda, we've reappointed a lot of people, but we still have some openings because not everybody can continue on. So really quickly, our Airport Advisory Commission has four vacancies. Our Board of Adjustment only has one. Our Civil Service only has one. Our Evergreen Cemetery has only one. We do have two on the Library Advisory Board. And then we still have one vacancy on the Police and Fire, but it has to come out of Ward Three. And we have one vacancy in Streets and Infrastructure. And finally, we still have our Youth Council vacancy on Adult Advisor. And then finally, the one that just doesn't seem to get our interest is the Committee on Disabilities. So that's got the full seven vacancies. So with that, if anybody is interested, please drop Nina a line and, and fill out an application and we'll surely consider that. So moving on, I'm gonna read this proclamation tonight. This is for what I've named as our Bisbee Ambassador. This is for Charlene Snooty Borowick. And it will be dated January 22nd. So whereas Charlene Snooty Borowick was born September 18th, 1936, in Bisbee, Arizona. And whereas Snooty was always helping her community, serving as a City of Bisbee Councilperson along with ver- along with various, on various boards and commissions and clubs, including the Bisbee Women's Club, the Evergreen Cemetery Committee. She was also a member of the Cochise County Tourism Association and the Cochise County Fair Association. And whereas Snooty was a strong believer in creating opportunities for young people to succeed. And this was reflected when she was the Secretary of the Bisbee High School Bookstore and the Palm Palm Advisor. She was known as the ultimate Puma cheerleader. And whereas Snooty was a walking historian about everything Bisbee, reminding us all of the historic dates and events. She traveled all over the western portion of the United States, sharing her knowledge of Bisbee. And whereas as a community, we have suffered a great loss with her passing. And whereas on behalf of the City of Bisbee and its residents, we wish to honor Snooty and her dedication and love for Bisbee. She will always be remembered and missed. Now, therefore, I can budge Mayor of the City of Bisbee, do recognize Tuesday, January 22nd, 2022, as City Ambassador Charlene Snooty Borowick Day dated this 18th day of January 2022. This is to coincide with a memorial that will be held on this coming Saturday. Thank you, everybody.
We miss her.
Yep. She was an icon. I've understood there's no, no one has written in or called for Call to the Public before noon today. So we'll move on to basically general business. So we'll start with accounts payable. Do I have a motion, please?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $340,883.65 subject to availability of funds.
All right. We have a, I have a second. I'll second that. And do we have anybody with questions on accounts payable? Can I see a hand? Any hands? Joni? Yep, go ahead.
Man mute here. So on page one, can you, yeah, page one. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines down. It says payroll, wait, no, five or six down, I should say. Compensation Fund Risk Retention. What's that for? It's $32,000. Do you see where, see where I'm talking about?
That's our quarterly liability insurance payment.
Okay. Okay. Also, on page three, we have towing for $213.75 and $243.03. What got towed?
Say that again, please.
Page three, it's under operational, no, it's moving, towing and storage. It's like the second main line down and it's for $213.75 and $243.03 on page three. And it says for towing services. What did we have towed?
I can't say specifically, but usually those are police tows.
Okay.
And they, they tow them to the, to the yard down at Public Works. And then the people who, whose cars have been towed, part of their penalty for their infraction is they get to pay to get it out of tow. So we get the money back.
Oh, okay. Also, page four. Um, if you go down, one, two, three, four, it's under Public Works. One, two, three, fourth, fourth main section under Public Works. It says gloves, wraparounds yet for $2,000. What is that? What is yet? And what are wraparounds?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah. Those are all our PPE products that we buy for the guys, gloves. The wraparounds are glasses. And then it was, what else did we get on that? Or I've gotten different nitro gloves, the orange nitro gloves that the guy's getting everything.
What's yet?
Yet.
Well, it just gets cut off.
Yeah. It might've said Yeti something, Matt, or cases or something.
Okay. Go ahead.
If that said, Yeti, that was with that company. The, when you get to a certain percentage or a certain price, they add in different stuff that, for compensation for that stuff. So it, I think it might've been, if that is what it is, that was like a cup or something that they put in order because it was, got to a certain price.
Okay. At the very bottom of the page, the Water Company for Garfield. How come Garfield is so high? It's a hundred dollars. I mean, there's not even a bathroom up there. Did we have a water leak at Garfield?
I know we did have a water leak. I'm trying to remember if that was at Higgins or Garfield.
The others are about the same, but
Yeah.
Yeah.
Logan, do you remember? I hate to put you on the spot, but I don't, I don't exactly remember which park it was, but we did have a leak. I know one was Grassy Park just recently. But Garfield, I don't exactly remember if we had anything. I'll write that down. I do have, I don't know if I should add it in this time, but I know Anna had asked about the Water Company for Grassy Park last time. Is that okay?
Meter. Matt, that was meter, right, with that one? That they're saying we, we did the breakdown on the fees today?
That was for Grassy Park that I talked about.
There's nothing for Garfield, though.
Okay, so guys, since we don't have answers, let's just get them and pass them along.
Okay. I, on page six, when you go down under advertising, it says City of Bisbee Trip Advisor. And it was for $7,500?
Yes, everybody asked about that one.
I was just curious why that doesn't come out of the transient.
It, it, it's supposed to be out of the Fund 20. So it's, it's gonna be corrected. We're sorry we didn't catch it before we printed.
Okay, sorry about that. Let's see, I think that is possibly, oh, I have one more. I lied. On page 10, repair and maintenance, lock bikes. What bikes are we locking? It's at the very bottom of the page.
Of what page?
10. And if you look under repair and maintenance, other, Ace Hardware Lock Bike. I know it's only 837, but what do we need lock bikes for?
That's probably a bike lock.
Oh, I got it.
No, it's probably not being used to lock a bike.
Okay.
A lot of those are cables that you use a lot, bikes, but they'll use it for other things like chargers and other public works, I'm guessing. That makes sense, Matt.
That's under the Queen Mine, so I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I see. Yeah, sorry about that. Okay, that's it.
All right. Anyone else? Any more hands in the air?
I think Johnny got them all, so that's good.
Hey!
Sorry.
Hey, Johnny.
All right. All right. We'll forge ahead here. And we have a motion to pay accounts payable in the amount of $340,883.65. We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Giacchino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to a, the consent agenda. What we have tonight is we have 10 reappointments, one new appointment and one set of minutes. Does anyone see any reason to pull any one of these 12 items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
I move that we the consent A through I. Or L, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and I'll guess I'll go back to the old method, which is a motion by Anna and a second by Joni to approve the consent agendas, consent agenda items A through I. Although, have a roll call.
Councilmember Giacchino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Hi. Motion passes 6-0 unanimously. All right. Moving on to all business. This is second readings. This will be item number three. I will recuse myself and go off the video at this time and turn things over to my Mayor Pro Tem, Ms. Klein.
Okay, so agenda item number three. We have discussion and possible approval of ordinance O-21-20 authorizing the transfer of real property from the City of Bisbee to Ken and Mary Alice Budge. Mr. Pocken, are you going to take this or Mr. Estes?
I, Mr. Estes has his name on it, so I'll defer.
I think somebody put my name on there. So, no. So Mayor Pro Tem Klein and Councilmembers, this is the second reading for the ordinance authorizing the recording of a quick claim deed to the budgets in connection with the resolution of the lawsuit with regard to the retaining wall issue. As we've discussed, this is just a quick claim deed, just quick claiming any interest that the city might own in that property, which the city claims it doesn't own any. So this just is a formality to finalize and one of the last requirements of that settlement agreement. Are there any questions?
No. I move to approve ordinance 0-21-20 authorizing the transfer of real property from the City of Bisbee to Ken and Mary Alice Budge.
There's
Be second.
Yeah.
So we have a motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Soad. And can we have a roll call, Ms. Renato?
Councilmember Giacchino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be moving on now to item number four. This will be a discussion and possible approval of ordinance O-22-01 authorizing the exchange and transfer of real property within property with Bisbee Vogue Inc., located near 201 Toonsong Canyon Street, Bisbee, Arizona, 85603. I can quickly, this is the second reading. Basically, what this does is take a piece of parcel, very small one, that's sitting in front of where we want to put the electric chargers and moving it over to, to the, another location where they won't be. It's basically swap land for land. In fact, we're getting a little more than what we're giving up. But that's basically it. I provided a little map last time. I don't think, if anybody has any questions, because I've been pretty involved in this, I could answer them. Don't want to take that away from you, Joe, but your name was on it. Anybody have any questions on a second reading of this ordinance?
I just have, I just have a question. If it passes, how long is it gonna be before it's completed?
Well, I just emailed APS this last week. We are in the queue to get it going. They're just behind on their construction. But as soon as this is out of the way, then there's no other impediments. And so I'm, we're just waiting on, on APS. And I, it's all their construction schedule. I, I wish I could give you a definite date, but it will be soon. We've been there for some time, so we should be able to get, get it going there shortly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, just to make it easy, I move to approve ordinance O-22-01 authorizing the exchange and transfer of real property with Bisbee Vogue Inc., located at 201 Toonsong Canyon, Bisbee, Arizona, 85603.
A second now.
Motion by myself, second by Frank, to approve ordinance O-22-01. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Giacchino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Hi. Motion passes 6-0 unanimous. So, all right, we're moving on to new business. This will be item number five. Okay, sorry. This will be a presentation of the audit that was just done. I'm going to toss it either Steve or Carrie.
Ms. Bagley.
Go ahead, Steve.
Ms. Bagley will take this one.
Hey, Carrie.
Mayor and Council, this is the audit presentation by Stephen Palmer with Hinton Burden verdict for our fiscal year 2021 audit. So he has a presentation. I think he's gonna share the screen, his screen.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Carrie. I appreciate that. As Carrie mentioned, we've recently completed the fiscal year 21 audit. It is my pleasure to take a few moments to report to you the results of our audit. But first of all, I'd like to take a few minutes to thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide these services. And also to thank Carrie and her great staff for all the help they gave us in completing the audit. An audit is not a painless process. We ask for a lot of documentation. We ask a lot of questions. We go through the, the finances quite thoroughly to ensure that we can give a, an opinion on the financial statements. And I certainly appreciate all their help. So with no further ado, I will attempt to share my screen. And I hope that popped up okay.
Not so far, Steve.
I haven't seen anything.
Nothing yet.
Yeah.
Let's try this. How's that?
Okay, there you go.
All right, very good. All right. So first of all, the, the, the question that you would like to have answered most is did the city pass their audit? And the answer to that is yes, the city passed. And in order to communicate that, we issue the Independent Auditor's Report. And in that report, we issued an unmodified opinion. And that's the type of opinion you want. That's what's sometimes called a clean opinion. That means that in our opinion, after we've completed all, all of our test work, it's our opinion that the city's financial statements present fairly the city's financial position and the results of the city's operations for the year ended June 30th, 2021. So that's the first report we issued. We issued a second report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. I'm pleased to report that in, in this, in this letter, we did not issue any material weaknesses or any significant deficiencies. And, and that's quite an accomplishment. We don't conduct many audits that don't have any findings that fall under these categories. We did issue one finding under compliance as it relates to grant management. Specifically, with regard to one grant that we tested, reports that were required to be submitted to the granting agency were not submitted in a timely manner. And that resulted in some delays in the city being reimbursed money that, that had coming to it from the grant. So that was the one issue of compliance. I know that, that your finance department and the public safety department have been working together to ensure these reports have been filed. It's my understanding that since we completed our test work, the reports have been filed and the city is in the process of being reimbursed these funds that are, they're owed. We issue another report on state compliance. This deals with things like the, the city's budget, use of highway user revenue funds, HERF funds, and, and things along those lines. And I'm pleased to report that we did not issue any findings in relation to this, the city's compliance with state legal requirements. Let's take a quick look at the city's finances. So if we look at the net position of the city or the equity, so if we're take the city's assets, subtract the liabilities, that residual amount is the equity. At the end of, at the end of fiscal year 21, so at June 30th, 2021, the net position was about 1.6 million. And over time, increases or decreases in net position are good indicators as to whether the financial health of the city is getting better or deteriorating. So for the year ended June 30th, 2021, the city's net position decreased by about 1.1 million. Now here, I think it's important to note that the city's finances are kind of broken into two different segments. You have the governmental activities. That would be the General Fund, the Highway User Revenue Fund, airport grants, things like that. That kind of falls under one category. And then there's a secondary category that's called the Business Type Activities. That consists of the city's utilities, wastewater sanitation, and also the Queen Mine. So the governmental activities reported a deficit net position of about 10,975,000. And the Business Type Activities had a net position, a positive net position of about 12 and a half million. I think it's also important that I mention that the governmental deficit consists almost exclusively due to liability, the public safety pension liability. And, and that's a significant amount. It's about $23 million at June 30th, 2021. So it's important to make those distinctions. It's important to see what's causing the net position to be lower than what we'd normally expect. And I, I had a discussion with the city manager this morning and, and we talked about the net pension liability and some of the plans that the city may have in, in the works to reduce that liability. I think I saw a hand. Is that correct?
Yeah. It's Mel.
Yeah.
Yeah. Basically, when you, you're saying the net position equity of 1.6 million. But you answer, then you mention about the debt we have. So basically, if you look at the overall health, we can say we have an equity because we have all the debt that we owe for about $23 million. Am I correct in this? Or why are we separating? Because then are we given, because when we go and say we are at 1.6 million over and we have equity balance and we have just 23 million, that's not healthy, is it?
We would like to see, typically, you would like to see the equity of a city the size of Bisbee be greater than 1.6 million, yes.
Yes. Okay. Yeah. And that's why we need to be clear because we're making this presentation and we're not, we can go on the assumption, hey, we're doing so well, but we have this $23 million in debt that we have to find a solution for.
That's, that's, that's correct.
Okay. That's all. I was just wanna, I just wanna reiterate this. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's look at the General Fund by itself for just a minute. Now, remember, when we look at the General Fund, it's measured differently than when we look at the city as a whole. So when we look at these finances for the General Fund, it does not include capital assets like land, buildings, vehicles and the like. And it also does not include the long-term debt that we discussed a moment ago. This focuses more on current assets and current liabilities. So if we look at the General Fund's balance sheet, that top line represents the assets. The middle line represents the equity and the bottom line represents the liabilities. You can see that for, for the past five years, the assets and, excuse me, the liabilities have been fairly consistent, but the assets and equity jumped up in 2018. That's a result of the over $2 million that the city received in insurance proceeds when City Hall caught fire. So you see it jump up. The city received that cash and that cash has not yet been spent. It has been committed for future capital projects pertaining to the City Hall, but it has not yet been spent. So it's sitting in the bank and so assets are higher than, than you might expect otherwise. Here's the cash trend for, for the General Fund. Again, you can see that cash increased in 2018 and 2019 as a result of insurance proceeds and it's been relatively stable thereafter. So at June 30th, there was about $3 million in cash in the General Fund. And it's been relatively stable thereafter. So at June thirtieth, there was about three million dollars in cash in the general fund. Now, keep in mind that six months has passed since then, so the numbers have changed. But at June thirtieth, there was three billion and approximately two million had been committed by the council, uh, for the city hall reconstruction. Now, it's important to note also that when, when funds are committed, they're not restricted in the same manner as like debt service funds are, funds that are set aside for debt payments. They're in a separate bank account. Funds that are committed have been placed there by, by the city council. And as a result, if the city council so chose, you could uncommit those, those funds. But at, at the present time, they are committed for the city hall project. And here's the revenues and expenditures for the general fund. Again, you see that spike in twenty eighteen from the insurance. But other than that, um, revenues and expenditures have largely mirrored one another. I think it's important to note that over the past five years, excluding the insurance proceeds, expenditures have exceeded revenues by about five hundred and eighty thousand in the general fund. Okay, let's look at the enterprise funds. These would be the utilities of the city as well as queen mine. Um, now, as, as we look at the business type activities or the enterprise funds, these are reported on the full accrual basis of accounting. So here you will see the capital assets and the long-term debt reflected in the financial statements.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
I, I just need to go back when you mentioned the word revenue. The money you would receive from the insurance, it's not the revenue, it's another income. Here we are, the word, the wording we're using. If I may say, you know, I've worked in, in the businesses. I think we need to specify it. It's not a revenue, it's another income. Is we get an income, it was not based on a revenue that the city got. And at the same time, you did not account for the building that we lost, because that building that we lost also had some value. So what was the value that was lost in the building? Uh, you're saying we have, we have, we have an increase of revenue. The wording of revenue, I think, uh, I think you need to be, be, be clarified. It's not a revenue. It's another income we got from insurance.
Yeah, it, it's interesting. In governmental accounting, you report inflows of, of assets as revenues and outflows of assets as of, of expenses. So it is proper in governmental accounting to recognize that as revenue. However, I hear you. I, I understand what you're saying. And that's why at the bottom of that slide, I chose to make, I, I put that little explanation saying, hey, if we back out that insurance revenue, the general fund really reported expenditures in excess of revenues of five hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
You're welcome. So let's look at the wastewater fund. You can see over the past, um, five years, expenses have exceeded revenues by about two point seven million. Um, it's, it's interesting to note here that this is on the full accrual basis of accounting. So we report depreciation expense. And this particular fund reported depreciation expense of about one point two million. So in prior years, capital assets were purchased. Those capital assets are providing benefit to the city over a long period of time. So we recognize the cost of those assets bit by bit each year. And, and in fiscal year twenty-one, one point two million of depreciation expense was recognized on the capital assets. And that expense is included in the expend, expense line there. So here you can see the, the cash trend for the wastewater fund. Uh, the fund has reported relatively stable cash balances for four out of the past five years. You'll see that, that cash dipped in twenty eighteen. And that's because in fiscal year twenty eighteen, the city decided to pay down, uh, a significant amount of debt and use the cash in the fund to do so. It was about two and a half million. Here's the sanitation fund. Uh, you can see that over the past five years, revenues have exceeded expenses by four hundred and sixty-six thousand. And in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, revenues exceeded expenses by two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. That was a result of a ma- a rate increase that I believe was enacted in May of twenty twenty, if I remember correctly. So fiscal year twenty twenty-one is the first full year of that rate increase. I, I'm relying on my memory there, so I hope I got it right. Um, here's the cash trend for the sanitation fund. You can see that although, um, revenues exceeded expenditures, the cash decreased to zero. And that's because the city, uh, purchased a couple of, of new trucks that, that took all the cash out of the fund. Uh, but those trucks will provide future, future benefits to the fund. Uh, those, the purchase of those funds is not initially reported as an expenditure, as an expense, because it's placed on the balance sheet and then those trucks are depreciated, uh, over the estimated life of the truck. So a portion of the cost of the trucks will be recognized in future years as they provide service to the fund, to the city. And last but not least is the queen mine fund. Uh, cumul- little cumulatively over the past five years, revenues have exceeded expenses by three hundred and fifty thousand. So very positive, uh, what we're seeing here for the queen mine fund. And here's the cash trend. You can see a little bit of a dip in twenty twenty, when, you know, COVID was at its height and, and things really slowed down or shut down for a period of time. So cash dipped. And then you can see it rebounded to a degree in fiscal year twenty-one. So those are the highlights I wanted to share with you. I certainly didn't cover everything. I covered what I, I thought you might find most interesting and what you might, may have found most important. Um, with that, if you have any questions, I will certainly be able to, uh, take those at this, this time and, and answer them.
Uh, go ahead, Mel.
Yeah, I just want to ask the gentleman, did, are you making any recommendation as part of this audit? Or what will be, was there any recommendation made on this?
Yeah, we, we did issue a findings and recommendations letter that has been sent to Carrie. Um, just, there was nothing of, of uh, that, that was really a, a big problem, but just minor, minor recommendations. And those were communicated to, to Carrie in a separate letter, yes. Okay, she has a copy of that letter if you'd like to see it.
Okay.
I believe that that was put in the packet.
Okay, looking.
Yeah, that's the last, last of it. Um, if you could quit sharing your screen and I can get
Certainly.
And I can get bigger, bigger. There we go. I can see people again. Well, bigger people. Okay, thank you. Just quickly, I just wanted to say, um, I, I was down at City Hall when the auditors were there. They were a great bunch. I mean, we had to put them in the, in the cafe, well, the, the break room. It's the only room we had. They were there working away. Um, so it was, uh, you know, that, they're doing their job and, and, and didn't complain a bit. So I do appreciate you working with us and, and, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll have a, a more conducive place for your next audit if you, if you are so, our next auditor, so.
No, no problem at all. We, we get put, uh, wherever we fit, wherever we go. So we're used to that, no problem.
Yeah. Uh, any more comments from, uh, council? Ah, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, just, uh, uh, it is, as far as closing remarks are concerned, uh, I've been around for um, ten, maybe eleven of Bisbee's audits over, uh, the last few years. Um, this is one of the cleanest, uh, that I've seen. And, uh, since I can't really take credit for it, because it was a fiscal year, I was only around for three months. Um, I have to, uh, uh, send, um, my, uh, congratulations to Carrie and her staff, uh, for, uh, number one, uh, doing a fine job through the year because you don't just produce a perfect audit. You have to do it twelve months a year in order for it to be right when the auditors come in and do their work. So Carrie, thank you, um, and thanks to your staff, uh, for, uh, doing yeoman's work and getting that, uh, that completed. Um, the only other thing I would like to add is that, uh, um, we do, um, have a lot of challenges before us. I would urge you all, uh, and, and Steve was right. He just kinda, uh, gave us an overview. Uh, the audit is a, a very much in-depth report. Um, in the last fifteen years, uh, GAZB, uh, the Government Accounting Standings Board, uh, has, um, just since I first moved to Bisbee, has added, I don't know, Steve, something like sixty additional rules. Uh, in the last fifteen years.
That's right.
Each time GAZB comes out with a new rule, um, that makes us do something additional or something different. Um, and, and, and none of them are meant to be easy. And so, uh, keeping up with them and still producing a clean audit is, makes the challenge even more daunting. So, uh, you know, do keep that in mind. I'm not gonna say, um, you know, a few of the, the GAZB rules that have come out have certainly made a difference in the way our financial statements looked. Uh, certainly thirty-four, uh, came out with, uh, and, and made us, uh, uh, recognize depreciation for the first time ever. Uh, so our financial statesmen, statements started looking a lot more like, uh, statements in the private sector. Uh, more rules have come out since. There's a lot more, uh, rules in, in the recent years, last five years, three to five years, uh, regarding, uh, how we deal with pension funds. And since, uh, the pension funds are a big deal here, um, with the unfunded liability, um, you notice as you read through your document, pages and pages and pages of extensive reporting, uh, that didn't exist ten years ago. So, uh, I consider that a good thing, but that adds an extra layer of work, both to staff and to the auditors. So, um, as we move into, uh, the budget period, which will be starting shortly, um, some of those things that we have seen in this audit will, uh, bear some scrutiny when we start building, uh, the budget for twenty-three. And, uh, so in, in that respect, this document is very helpful and a good guidepost. So, uh, Steve Palmer, I want to thank you and your staff. Uh, they were, uh, very attentive to their work when they were doing the field work at City Hall, uh, answered all my questions, um, and, uh, look forward to doing it again. Uh, not really, never look forward to doing audit, but if I have to do one, I look forward to doing it with you guys.
Thank you.
So, and Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. Any other comments? If not, we will move on.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, thank you, Miss, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. Good evening.
Have a good evening. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number six. This is the hearing that will deal with the Jeff Harris bid protest. Um, before we get started, um, to set some, uh, background here, of course, this, uh, this dates back from over three years ago, believe it or not. Um, it's worked its way through the, uh, court system, all the way up to the, to the, uh, Arizona Supreme Court. It was kicked back to, to the Superior Court, um, and, uh, was mandated or given direction that, uh, that the Superior Court should give us direction, which they did. Um, it was dated on the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. So, under our city code, um, city council shall hear and consider the appeal within two regular meetings. The protester and the city manager shall be given reasonable opportunity to be heard in the matter. So with that said, um, I'm gonna allow both the protester and the city manager to, um, use their time or, or have people speak in their behalf for those ten minutes. If, uh, for each side, if, uh, they would like to make more comments afterwards, then please, please re, um, reserve some of that time, uh, for any comeback after the other presentation. Um, so with that, uh, being said, uh, we will move forward. Ashley can start the clock. And, uh, Mr. Harris, I see you're on board. So, uh, go ahead, please. Thank you.
Jeff, you're muted.
Still can't hear you, Jeff.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Something's wrong with your mic. One more try, Jeff. Uh, try not, try to fix your computer to, to have the sound on, those microphone.
Yeah, it doesn't show him as being muted.
No. Try heading your spacebar.
Try it now.
No, that's not working.
Maybe he could try.
Yeah, you could try to call in with the phone number. That's part of the invite. If that doesn't work, you can still stay on your video, but also call in as well if that'll work.
And Mayor, could I suggest that, could we move along to item seven while Mr. Harris is fixing technically?
Exactly. I was just gonna say that, exactly. Um, one thing. If, under Zoom, you can go in and check out your sound before, but, um, you could see if there's a problem there. All right, uh, we'll let, uh, city clerk and, uh, and he work that out. So I'll move on to item seven. We'll just put six on the back burner for a minute. All right, um, item number seven, this is discussion of possible approval of a public auction for the transfer of certain city property located at number eight Douglas Road. This is, uh, parcel number one oh three dash seven two dash oh five one A, and the establishment of a minimum bid price. So what we're doing here is basically, uh, deciding with, we want to auction this off and what the minimum bid price would be. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Taylor, our planner. Go ahead, Doug. Uh, I'm mute, Doug. Dang mute button, no.
There you go. Okay, can you hear me now? I have Verizon. Um, Mr. Mayor and Council, I, uh, am coming to you with a, uh, transfer of city property requested by Mr. Mike Ablin. And it is for eight Douglas Road in Bisbee. It is a parcel of eight thousand one hundred and sixteen square feet. Uh, the, uh, uh, proposal to transfer this city property predates my, uh, my, uh, hire here in the city. Um, but I have, uh, gone through everything that, uh, that was involved and I will give you my recommendation. Uh, the, uh, the land is considered no longer of use to the city. And, uh, you're looking for a minimum bid for this property. And, uh, it was set apparently, uh, previously at thirty thousand dollars as a, as a, um, uh, preliminary, uh, minimum bid. And I agree with that number. I've done my research and I agree with that number.
All righty, comments from council. Do we know this is the one next to the ice house, right?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a little bit of background, um, the, uh, that building, uh, had ceased to be used a, a very long time ago. Uh, it stopped being used prior to my first arrival here in two thousand and six. Um, at one time, uh, the, the, the portion closest to the cemetery was an apartment. Uh, when we had a cemetery sextant, uh, that person used to live there. And then there are four to six bays of, of garage, uh, garage bays, um, that, uh, were used for equipment storage, mostly, uh, tools and equipment used in the cemetery along with, uh, lowering devices and other pertinences that are used in, in, uh, gravesite services. Um, we haven't used them in a good long time. And the, um, the building has been kind of plagued a little bit with vandalism, uh, a little bit with bees. Um, I remember in twenty nineteen, uh, we had to get the killer bee out there uh, to get rid of a rather large swarm of bees. And they do tend to come back and they, they apparently like the place well enough that they can do that. Um, so it is of absolutely no value to the city for city functions. Um, and, uh, we believe that it would be more productive in the community, uh, if someone else was able to buy it, restore it and use it.
All righty, Joni, go ahead.
So then this was part of the cemetery, right?
So then this was part of the cemetery, right?
It's.
Believe it was, yeah.
It, it's, yeah, it's a parcel adjacent to the cemetery.
But it was part of the cemetery complex, was it not? If the sextant lived there?
Mm-hmm.
So then the cemetery get a cut of the profit?
Um, well, the cemetery operates out of the general fund, um, proceeds from the sale of that property. Uh, by our rule, go into the capital improvements fund. But you're willing, you're, 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 you're welcome to talk about it at budget time.
It's, go ahead. Uh, you, you through, Joni?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Mel.
Yeah, uh, Steve, uh, what do you think whoever buys it, uh, what will it be? Do you have an idea what it can be used for? What's it suitable for? Is it commercial? Is it, can it be? I mean, is there a guideline on what we expect it to be used for, or is there a limit on what they can use it for?
Mr. Taylor, I believe that the prospective, uh, bidder has indicated what he wants to use property for.
Yes, that's correct. Uh, storage and an office.
Okay, so it's, uh, okay.
Pretty much what it's been used for all along.
Uh, and just a follow-up, and basically this will, will go on auction, not necessarily to Mike, uh, Blaine, but anyone that can come up with a better bid. Okay, so it's not just.
Correct.
Um, okay.
It's an open, open bid.
Okay, okay.
If you've been out there, I went there the other day, and it's not looking any better than it did five years ago when I went. So, it's got a lot of work to do if, if, if at all, but, but it needs to be saved. I, it, it is a savable building for sure. Uh, uh, oh, Anna, go ahead. I see your hand.
Um, I wouldn't say that it's not of any use to the city, be, since it is right there on the cemetery property. We're running out of spaces for graves, and I think we could come up and put some kind of a building up there and use it for a columbarium. Uh, and that would help with some of the, the spaces that we'll need in the future. So I really hate to see it go out, um, to bid when the city could actually use it.
So, I didn't quite get that, but you're, you're thinking of making it a building for, for interment then?
Correct. You know, use it, use it for a columbarium, or even if we take the buildings down and add a few more, um, in-ground spaces, that would be okay too. But there's enough room there that we could probably do both. But I, you know, just because we are running out of space there, I think we could use it for a columbarium for cremains.
All right, it's one idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I concur, uh, with what, uh, Ann just said. I think, uh, it's a, it's a good-sized property, eight, eight thousand one hundred and, uh, you know, it's a, it's a good size. It's something, I think, the proximity to the, to the cemetery can be of future use. I think, you know, that's a, that's a good amount of property to, 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 to give for thirty thousand dollars right now with the needs that we have. So, that would be my. Okay.
Hey, Joni?
Along with what Anna said, um, the building itself isn't necessarily important as far as columbariums go, because a lot of those are pre-built anywhere. Uh, it's just the land itself. Uh, there's a lot of plot space and, um, and like she said, we are running out. We're having to go back off into that back area. I mean, the more space we have for people, the better off we are, so. I agree with that.
All right, um, Frank?
I think, uh, we've got to remember we're considering building a new city hall, and any money that we can gather together will help us facilitate that. Um, and, you know, so you, you, we don't do anything with this building. It just sits there. You know, where's the money going to come to tear it down, to maintain it? You know, you're going to have the bees in there again. It's getting tagged. Uh, you know, let's, let's think about what we've done with it so far. Absolutely nothing. So it might be a better move to sell it.
Um, Leslie, oh, go ahead, Anna.
As far as expense of tearing it down, we have a public works department that, um, I'm pretty sure that they're really capable of doing that. It wouldn't be an added expense.
Well, sure, when you're going to pay for that time.
Anyway.
Yeah, I don't know how many plots that would, that would work out. Then we would have to also refence, wouldn't we, to, to fence it all back in? To, uh, to, to include it as part of the cemetery, um, somehow.
Matter of shifting.
What's that?
Matter of shifting the, uh, wrought iron. It wouldn't be that big of a, a dilemma, and there's extra wrought iron out there.
Okay, I, I didn't know that. I just knew that we'd have to move the fence. Go ahead, Les- Leslie.
Um, is there any way we can look at the costs for what it might be to, uh, not sell the property and then raise the building? Like, because we're all just kind of spitballing ideas here, but I would rather have numbers in front of me, um, to make this decision.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Okay, uh, just, uh, to, I'm going to answer your question. Um, but also I, I just wanted to be clear, uh, for the record, that, uh, staff is not an advocate on this matter. Uh, this request was brought before us. Uh, we are, when somebody, uh, puts down a check and asks to buy a piece of, uh, city-owned property, it's, it's our job to bring it to you and ask permission to see whether or not we're, we can sell it. That's what we're doing here tonight. We're not selling it tonight. We're just getting permission or not, whether or not you will allow us to put it up for public auction. Uh, with specific regard to Leslie's question, um, I, I think your question needs to be in a little bit greater context. Um, you know, uh, first of all, you know, the current cemetery is about forty-five acres. Uh, give or take ten. I don't know for sure, um, uh, and surrounding land, most of which is owned by Freeport. And so I think the, the, the broader question, if, if I were to be asking, it would be not just the site of the Sexton House, uh, property, but also the site of the old Ice House property, which is much larger, and also, um, expansion possibilities around the periphery of the existing cemetery. So, now, that holds up the process, but that's okay, because that's what we do. Um, so it, rather than focus on eighty-one thousand square feet of a forty-five to fifty-acre piece of property, um, I think we ought to do a more comprehensive scan of what we have, uh, what we can do and how long that will last based on the cemetery records of burials for the last hundred years. I think we need to take a more comprehensive look, in other words.
I think that's what Leslie was after.
It was. Thank you, Steve.
More than you wanted, right?
All right. So I'm, I'm, I'm getting the feeling, I'm not counting votes, but I do. I think I'm getting a feeling that, uh, we may want to put this on, uh, on hold for now and, and let the staff do a little more work and bring back a, uh, some sort of a, uh, you know, assessment on this and, and then, you know, not necessarily throw it out with the bathwater, uh, immediately, but, uh, we, we can, uh, um, put it aside and just tell them we're, we're, we're still working on our decisions. So, does that seem to be a consensus?
Yeah.
All right.
He's already been waiting a long time. It won't hurt to wait a little longer.
Yeah, well, he's got a big job there at the American Legion, so he's got plenty of work, so. You know, all right, um, let's just, uh, bypass this one unless there's anybody that has a, a, a hankering for a motion. Not seeing one. We'll move backwards and we will go back to item number six. Hopefully we have a connection now. So, reminding where we are, um, we'll, uh, turn this, uh, time right now over for ten minutes to Mr. Harris. Go ahead, hopefully.
Um, before my time starts, I'd like to, um, clarify what will occur if there is a tie vote.
I, I don't, that's an order.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to answer that. It's, it's standard procedure. A tie vote is a no vote. Simple as that.
But then I cannot participate with the even council. That puts me at a huge disadvantage because I would.
Okay, your time has started, so go ahead. You can use your ten minutes now as, uh, as you like. Go ahead.
Well, no, I, I, I cannot participate because the, uh, uh, deck is stacked against me. I would need four votes to prevail, and the, uh, other party would only need two votes to prevail. This is not in any means, any manner fair. I, I wish to, uh, ask for a continuance until such time as there's an odd number on the council who will decide this.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harris, but the prop, the situation is it's equal on both sides. It would take four votes for us to turn this down, same way as it would be to take four votes to, so it's an even playing field. Your ten minutes has started. Please use them accordingly.
Let me, so let me get this straight. The, uh, uh, if there, in a tie vote, then there is no, uh, result. It's merely tied. It's neither for up or down.
No, a motion made, it's tied, is a no vote. So it's, so it is an even playing field. We're going to move on here. If the motion is made to reject this, then the city has to prevail with four votes. If the, if the motion is made to sustain this protest, then it takes four votes. So there is no unfairness. It's an even, just depends on the motion.
And it doesn't make sense, your argument that, uh, uh, a tie vote is a no vote.
It depends on the motion. So whatever motion's made, it's the way it works. So I'm not, I'm not going to delay this because we are by city mandate to hear this in two meetings. It's been two meetings, so.
I, I will permit it to be, uh, continued until you have an odd number. I.
Well, I can't, I can't, I can't just say that over the top of, of city ordinances. So I'm going to turn it over to city.
No, yes, you can. I, I'm the one who is, uh, at, uh.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead. I'm going to turn, okay, your time has started. Go ahead.
There, there, there is nothing in the code that states that there has to be an odd number of council members present at the time of the discussion of your bid protest. It has to be a council meeting with a majority of the council present. There is a quorum. The quorum is present, and you are welcome to present your case at this time. The city is not required to continue this and will not continue this. This has been pending for over three years now. If you would like to put on your case, you can put on your case. If you do not choose to put on your case, that is your decision. But we're not going to sit here and discuss further whether or not there has to be an odd number of council members to hear your bid protest. So either move forward with your bid protest, or the city will move forward with its presentation to council. And four minutes have already expired.
I, I, I wasn't even speaking. How can one minute of my time be expired?
Okay, we're, we're starting now. Go ahead.
All right, I, but I, I raise an objection to the fact that there is an, uh, odd, and there is an even number of council members, and you have denied my request to continue this until such time that there is an, an odd number. Um, I, I want to clarify that the protest was and is not against the council's decision to outsource the operations management of the sewer plant. This is a, this is the council's prerogative. Rather, protest called into question the manner in which the contract to outsource was procured, and it also challenged its legality. In the absence of a conflict of interest, there are few if any laws governing the judgment used by a public body in making a decision. But there are numerous laws meant to restrict corrupt practices such as bid rigging. In this instance, the mayor and council violated quite a number of state statutes and city codes whose purpose was to curb such practices. Quite simply put, the mayor and council violated the law in procuring the Jacobs contract, and as a result of such unlawful procurement, the contract is therefore void. I have not heard, there, the city has not put forth any, um, response to the merits of my case in, in which I outlined five points. Uh, instances in which the city has violated state code, uh, uh, city code, state, uh, statute or both. And I asked that, uh, the city manager respond to those issues that are outlined in my written brief to council on appeal. So I, I'm finished speaking for now, and I reserve the right to, to respond to his answers, to his, uh, his, uh, answers to, uh, his response to my, uh, charges.
You're muted, Ken.
You reserve your right, um, for remaining time for one rebuttal. So, um, Ashley, you can put that down. I don't know what the minutes are, but at this point.
Mr. Harris, you have seven minutes and thirty-five seconds left.
All right, uh, we'll move on to the, um, other side, which will, uh, be city manager's pocket or his representative.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, due to the fact that this, uh, litigation's been going on for three years, um, and my short time not involved in any of the litigation, uh, I'm going to yield all of my time to the city attorney for presentation. Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
I object.
Well, you can object, but I appreciate it.
I, I object for the reason that the city attorney.
Mr. Harris, it's our turn, it's our turn now. You, you need to.
I, I want to raise an objection.
Okay, it's your turn. Okay, it's right, sir. It's raised. Now it's our turn. You need to be quiet.
Oh, I, let me explain my objection.
No, you don't get a chance to explain your objection. You've raised your objection. You object to me presenting on behalf of the city. That's fine. You've raised your objection. It's noted in the record. You don't get a chance to sit here and argue against the city.
You are not the presider of this, of this meeting. That, that, that goes as a further objection. The mayor is the, the one who is, uh, presiding here.
Okay, okay, um.
This is a conflict of interest.
Listen to me, Mr. Har- Mr. Harris, listen to me, please. Either you be quiet, or I'll have Ashley mute you. So you need to not, you, your objection has been raised. I set the parameters when I started this, and I said, I will give ten minutes to both sides or their representatives. So that's the way this was set.
There was no mention of who their representative.
Well, I did at the first. At, okay, from here on out, we are moving forward with the city's side. Go ahead, Mr. Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council's aware, the city code requires or provides for the city to provide a, a reasonable opportunity for a protester to be heard. This is a reasonable opportunity for Mr. Harris to be heard and a reasonable opportunity for the city. First, I would point out that Mr. Harris is not an interested party as contemplated under the city code. Mr. Harris was not a participant in the bid or the procurement and therefore cannot protest this matter as simply as a taxpayer. That is simply not how the, 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 the city code is written, or how case law has been interpreted, or how the state statutes provide, or even federal law. In order to file a formal bid protest, a party has to be an interested party, which means that party has to be involved in that bid procurement, not just simply a resident or a taxpayer of the community. Mr. Harris was more than welcome to express his, his disdain or, or dislike of the item at the call to the public or at the public hearing before that contract was awarded. But he is not allowed to entertain and, and to submit the bid protest, which is why the hearing was initially not awarded. There's been a, in a appellate court decision that said because of, uh, the way that the city code is read, that the city shall hear the bid protest. I will be in the process of preparing and providing to the council amendment to the city code that defines who an interested party is, so this doesn't happen again. Simply put, you can't have residents sitting. Simply put, you can't have residents sitting there and filing bid protests on every procurement that the city enters into. It would simply stop the business of the city, and it costs the city tens of thousands of dollars to engage in this process that Mr. Harris has initiated. Mr. Harris cites two main bodies of law claiming that the contract is void. One is city code 3.5.1.3 and ARS 34601 at all. ARS 34601 does not apply to this case at all because 34601 applies to architectural engineering and construction services. It applies to job order contracting for construction services and architectural services. It does not apply to a contract what we have here, which is for the operation and management of a wastewater treatment plant, period. There is no applicable ARS statute that applies here. The contract, he claims that the contract violated essentially city code 3.5.1.3, which is a city code that provides for provisions for multi-year contracts. Essentially, there's nothing in the city code that requires that each one of those code provisions be included as a term of the contract. They are there to guide and direct the city when it enters into multi-year contracts. All of those requirements have been met. There were sufficient funds at the beginning when this contract was entered into for the first year of the contract. There were sufficient available funds to continue the contract. There are still sufficient available funds to continue the contract. The contract is not void. It has been reviewed by multiple attorneys on behalf of the city. I think I'm either the fourth or fifth attorney that has looked at the contract. The contract is a valid binding contract. Mr. Harris doesn't have the right or the ability to protest this. He also cites, one of his last arguments, that the professional service were not procured in a manner provided by 34603 because of the selection committee. Again, that statutory provision does not apply to contracts for the management of a wastewater treatment facility, and I would reserve the rest of the time for my rebuttal.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Harris, you have your seven minutes plus to finish up. Thank you.
I object to the fact that the appellate gets a rebuttal after myself. That is not proper procedure in the state of Arizona. I object to the fact that the, there's a conflict of interest with the attorney representing both the council and one of the parties. This is clearly improper. There will be a bar complaint over this one. Um, as for some of the points, it's easy enough to just claim that we don't have standing, but his arguments are clearly counter to established law in this state. I quote from...
He's muted. I think we lost him. Is he muted? Is the...
He, he might have muted himself because I'm asking him to, there we go.
Yeah, okay, he's back, he's back.
All right, I'm back again. There's a long history of cases in Arizona which all establish that that a taxpayer has the right to, to, to protest an alleged illegal standing. These, this argument has been made in a number of the documents that I have provided, and also in the argument that I, in my opening and reply brief that I have provided separately, but were not included in the agenda packet. City has responded to this, and it's pretty much a drive-by shooting on me to have the, have only ten minutes to argue against newly presented argument by the city. The notion that, that these statutes do not apply is without foundation. The, I notice that no, the statutes and city codes do not apply is not, is not without foundation. The one that I addressed, that I address principally now is point number five. The, the contract is very much governed by both the statute involving construction services and technical, technical services. In both of those cases, a professional engineer must be one of the members of the council, of the selection committee. There was no professional engineer in this instance. Uh, the requirement is that the committee, selection committee be competent. And there, there was no, one of the key requirements for their competence is the, the selection, the inclusion of a, of a professional engineer. This is reminiscent of what happened when, years ago during the Beecham administration, when there was a scandal over the selection of the Gila management, so, selection of Gila management as one of the contractors for the, the services in the original construction of the sewer plant. There was a huge scandal because the argument that there was a, a claim that there was a professional engineer on the selection committee turned out to be false. The supposed professional engineer turned out not to be an engineer of any sort, much less a professional engineer. He wasn't even a U.S. citizen. He was a geographer from Mexico. Must we do these same illegal procedures over and over again? I ask you to, to look at my argument in my various documents because clearly I don't have time to put any of them forth today. I'm being ambushed. And this, this is a wholly improper proceeding. I, I wish to reserve a little bit of time pass for my final say, as I should be getting as the appellant.
You have your final say now, sir. You've reserved your, you have one opportunity. Go ahead.
Appellant invariably has the final say. This is improper.
Well, this is not a court of law. This is a hearing under here. So go ahead and finish up your statement. I don't know what time you have left, but you should use it wisely.
A minute and forty-six seconds.
I don't have enough time left to do anything other than to complain about the way this entire proceeding has been improperly constructed. I'm done here.
All right, thank you, sir. Please mute. Mr. Estes, do you have any final word?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, counsel. I'm just going to be short here and say that Mr. Harris is never going to be happy with, with anything that is short of supporting his argument that the contract is void and should be deemed void and get rid of the contract. That's his bottom-line position. He's not going to be happy regardless of anything else other than that. Now even to the point of threatening a bar complaint because he's raised legal arguments against the city's contract, claiming that it's void, and then complains that the city attorney is providing the council with information with regard to the legality of that contract.
That is a misstatement. I stated it was a conflict of interest.
Please mute yourself.
Please do not mistake...
Ashley, you need to mute him. Thank you.
Thank you. He threatened a bar complaint against me because he claimed I could not represent the city and the city council. And he's made legal arguments as to the contract that the city's entered into. He's claimed that it is void, making various legal arguments, which I provided information to the council in rebuttal of his arguments. The city has provided no new arguments. The city has just, I went through the five issues that he raised in his purported bid protest, even though under the city code, he's not a proper party. He's not an interested party. I've still gone through and even addressed those issues, even though it's my assertion that the council should find and make a motion to deny the bid protest and find that Mr. Harris is not a proper party, not an interested party, to be able to even make a bid protest. This is a contract for the management and operation of a wastewater treatment facility. It's not a construction project. It's not an engineering project. It's not, not an architectural project. That's it. It's a simple management contract for the operation of the city's wastewater treatment facility, and that's it. Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Thank you, Joe. With that, unless city manager Pocken has any other use of his time, Mr. Steve?
Yes, just to recommend, counsel, that the protest be rejected.
All right. With that, I'll close this hearing and open it up for discussion among the council. Let me just reiterate here quickly that we all understand by city code, it says the decision of the city council is the final administrative action. So we have complete say here on how we take administrative action. So do I have any, any comments or concerns or questions from council? Mayor, go ahead.
I just, I just want to make a statement about this whole situation since I came into this. I think the confusion Mr. Harris has is whether it's a valid contract or not. It is a valid contract. As far, was it a good contract? Most of us, some of us would say it wasn't a good contract. Is it something that later on in the future we get to look at? We have a contract now, Mr. Harris, that's going to expire, you know?
Uh-oh. You froze, Mel. You hear me? Well, we'll work on him. Any other, any other comments from anyone? Not seen any hands. Let me just finish up here quickly from my point of view here. Let's be honest, this was a, something in our city code that I'll be thankful that Mr. Harris actually brought this before us because it's something we need to get corrected. This is not something we, that should be coming before us. Next time I want to go out to a contract for the animal shelter, I shouldn't need to worry about somebody that didn't bid on it telling us that we can't have somebody take care of it for us. So it's really a matter of how the city operates. I really believe that, that the five items that he brought up, three of them being the financial, really don't hold any water because financially we were fine to enter into this. The, the other two are stretching the imagination a bit, and so with that, I, I have a hard time thinking there's enough here to do anything, even if he had standing, which, which is a completely different situation as our attorney has said.
I'm back. I was, I was cut off, so I'm back.
Okay, okay. You can, you can finish now, Mel, if you don't freeze.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, what I want to say, well, like I said, basically, this was, was a contract. It's a valid contract. Some of you here and us, we have issue with the contract, the city council and the mayor, and all of us, we think something we have to look at in the future, and we will, we will. Maybe it was not, was not a good negotiated contract, but it's a contract that we have to live by, and sometimes that's the best way to go about it. We learn from it. And hopefully, when it comes up for renegotiation with cops after the period, we'll come up hopefully with a better contract and we'll do a better homework on this. So that's all I want to say about this, and hopefully we will do a better job.
All right, thank you for that. So without seeing any other hands, would somebody like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to reject the protest.
I second.
We have a motion by Frank and a second by Mel to the council to reject this protest. Roll call, please, Ash.
Councilmember Giacomo.
Joni.
Councilmember Giacomo.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suede.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes six-zero, unanimous. All right, protest is rejected. We already handled item number seven, so we'll move now on to item number eight. This is a petition that we received that we are required to hear about a resident living at sixteen Yuma Trail requesting that the property be cleaned and monitored. I'm going to ask nicely if the two ward, two members who live there would chime in on this because this is really your, your beta whip right there, and let us, let us, let me hear from you first. I don't know if anybody's here to speak to it. I don't think there is Ashley to the, to the petition, right?
That's correct. I don't see her online.
So I'll let Joni take off, Mel, and then you can ask.
Okay, I guess my, my main question is, has this been forwarded to Joe Ward? And if so, what is his, his bend on it? Because isn't that in his realm? Or am I wrong?
Mr. Mayor.
Steve, go ahead.
Yes, the answer is yes. Mr. Ward is familiar with the conditions on the property.
So would he be the one that would then move forward with whatever goes on?
He would be one of them. The fire inspector would also take a look at it, and perhaps the health department, depending on what Mr. Ward believes, who Mr. Ward believes needs to inspect the property.
So then, if, then you're saying it's already in motion, then? Sorry.
Well, I wouldn't call it already in motion because we were aware of the petition that's before you tonight. And usually when there's petition, we allow counsel first crack at it and any direction you may want to give us.
Okay.
I don't think as of now, there's been any, we will direct staff on how you all would like to go. Is that correct, Steve?
You can do either way.
Yeah.
It's your prerogative.
All right, go ahead, Mel.
Yeah, yeah. I think, you know, most of us who live around here are aware of the situation. I think, I'm glad somebody brought it up and we need to look at, and hopefully we will go with the proper procedure on this, like with Joe and the fire department. I think we should set this in motion. Yeah.
All right, that's from our ward, two council members where this is located. Any other comments from, or questions from other council members? Oh, Joni, go ahead. Just one more, and I'll give it to Hannah.
Okay, sorry, I just have a quick one. So then if it, if it does get voted okay, it goes to Joe and the fire marshal, et cetera, then whatever they decide will then be what determines, correct? Or no?
That is correct. For the most part, they have enforcement power under the city code and the city charter. Due to the nature of the situation, and I'm just being candid here, the owner of the particular property may or may not choose to cooperate. uh, may or may not choose to cooperate, uh, with city personnel. Uh, and if so, then we may have to involve the police department as well. Uh, this is not dissimilar uh, from what we did several months ago up on Brophy Avenue, uh, with the, uh, with the issues with the cat and the condition of that property at that time. Uh, and, and you will recall uh, that that owner was charged with, uh, several, was cited on several infractions and is awaiting, uh, prosecution in, in the court at the present time. So what, what we would, what we would prefer, and I know Mr. Harris is listening, that, uh, we would prefer cooperation. Uh, we would prefer that any, uh, notices of violations that come out of these inspections uh, be dealt with, uh, properly and, uh, thoroughly, uh, so that, uh, the enjoyment of the neighborhood is returned.
Uh, go ahead, Anna. I saw your hand. What's up?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I agree with Mel on this. Um, this property has been like this for such a long time. And I've always wondered, you know, why, why this, you know, I know we have ordinances, but I never understood why the city hadn't really looked at it. Um, I'm just kind of glad, you know, it's not my neighbor, but, um, I do feel for the surrounding, um, homeowners there and, and, you know, just because it is a mess. And, you know, I, again, I look at the fire hazard as, as well. Um, so I, whatever it takes, you know, I, I hope things can be worked out amicably and get the situation taken.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, just a, a little, a comment based on, uh, Ms. Klein's comments. Uh, um, shortly after I returned, uh, to work uh, earlier this year, I, or excuse me, it's last year now. Um, I was contacted, uh, by the person who has, has, uh, uh, brought you the petition, uh, Su Ray. And, uh, uh, we had quite a conversation about the entire situation and, um, so, um, after, uh, looking at the property and seeing the conditions of the property, uh, firsthand, since I'd been retired for a while. We, uh, uh, we talked again and, uh, we determined that the best route was to show the neighborhood had supported the city in, uh, dealing with any actions that needed to be taken. She took the bull by the horns and collected signatures in her neighborhood. Uh, whether their adjacent properties or not makes no difference whatsoever. Uh, they're all people who are in the neighborhood and have a stake in the community. And, uh, so, and, and as you know, the charter specifies that when we get a petition like this, we have a certain amount of time to act on it. Uh, now is the time to, for council to act on it, and we will accept any direction the council gives.
All righty. Thank you. Um, anyone else with comments? Not seeing any, uh, did want to just make a comment on, on the situation we had up at Brophy that we're actually working with that gentleman, uh, to try to get his place worked up. Joe's working with him on a monthly basis. Um, it isn't like we're trying to kick somebody out of their house. Um, we had to in order to, until it became livable. So we do work with people. It isn't a matter of us taking, it's a matter of us trying to clean up and get things in better order. Uh, we had one of these happen in Ward three, as I remember, um, out, um, and there was San Jose, one of them where she was running basically a farm in her yard and, and we started working on that and eventually she moved, but, uh, but yeah, that one was taken care of too. So, so it isn't a matter that, that this is so punitive. It's a matter of trying to make stuff, beat our codes and beat our, our obligations to, uh, to the neighbors. Would, uh, either one of the ward two members like to make, uh, some, I don't think we have vote. We could just give a direction, or if you'd like to make a motion, you can. What would you like?
Don't have my, have your papers, Joni, you can do it.
Um.
Don't have the.
Hold on. Let me see where I put them. Yeah, I have it here.
Okay.
So, um.
Number eight.
Yeah, I'm trying to get it straight. So I would move to, um, give direction to staff to, um, I guess, evaluate and, um, follow through with any needed um, rectification. I don't know. Is that what I should say?
Yeah, rectification of the situation. What would the owner, yeah. I second that.
All right. We have a motion by Joni, a second by Mel. Uh, I believe we can do a roll call on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Hearing none. Chair says the ayes have it. So moved. Thank you, Jeff. Everyone. All right. Moving on to item number nine. This will be discussion of possible approval of amendment number three to the Jacobs Agreement for Operation Maintenance and Management Services for the city of Bisbee's waste, San Jose Wastewater Treatment Plant. Um, Matt, I think this has got your name on it.
Yes, sir. Mayor Council, thank you. Yeah, bringing to you the number three amendment to, like the mayor said, for the Jacobs Agreement. Um, the main difference on this, one of the main difference on this is, um, this has been from the previous amendments have been from January to December. This is now what Jacobs is trying to do is to extend that so they'll be in line with our physical, um, year in the future. Um, so this will be starting from January first, twenty twenty-two, which was this January, uh, through Ja- June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So that, and then at the end of this, we would have six months to the end of the five-year contract. Um, what else we have? So the, the base fee, which you can see there is one million ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Any questions?
All righty. We're gonna open it up for questions. Joni, go ahead.
If you clarify, um, this isn't a whole new contract, correct?
No, ma'am.
Because that seems to be the buzz. Oh, we're doing a whole new contract with Jacobs and et cetera. So could you really clarify that for the public so that they understand what this truly is?
Yes, thank you. Uh, yeah, this is just a continuation for the, usually it's for the year, the amendment for the ne- for the year, the coming year, and usually this would have been coming in December. Uh, and we had, uh, we ended up tabling it, I believe, the last one. Um, so, um, that is why it's here now. So yeah, it's, it's for this one, this amendment is for eighteen months coming forward.
Fair.
Okay, um, go ahead, Mr. Sis.
If I could, I, I'll just give a, a little bit of an explanation with regard to why we have these amendments and they are amendments. They're not renewals or, or new contracts or anything like that. The initial contract provided for an annual price adjustment. And that price adjustment has been handled by way of amendment, amending the, the, the price of the operation contract for that next year. So this one is a little different, like, like Matt said, than the, the first two amendments because this one addresses an issue where it takes this contract and puts it in line with the city's fiscal budget, which is a July one to June thirtieth time period as opposed to a January one to December thirtieth time period, which is what this current contract is on. So it's just to try to align it with the city's fiscal budget. And so that these price adjustments can be discussed and incorporated into the annual budget discussions. Not on an off cycle like we have here where council's looking at, uh, the potential of approving a, an amendment uh, and a slight price increase to a budget item. Um, so that, that's one of the reasons. The other change that this amendment provides for is it, uh, it adjusts the, uh, under the original contract, the parties are to three months before the expiration or before the, the the expiration of that, that one-year, uh, funding period are to get together and discuss and come to an agreement on a, a potential price adjustment. If the parties are not able to come to an agreement on a price adjustment, then the contract provides for a a formula to use to calculate any price adjustment, which is based off of an adjusted base fee, an adjustment factor, and the current contract provides for the use of the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, which is based off of consumer goods. And what this is doing is it's also adjusting and amending that formula to put it more in line with a consumer index that follows uh, uh, in, in industrial industry similar to a wastewater treatment plant as opposed to consumer goods. So it just makes sense that any uh, any index that's used for inflation purposes is an index that is aligned to that industry and not to consumer goods. Uh, it just makes it, um, easier to track. It also, I would point out that this year, using this, uh, this different consumer indexes, this industrial index as proposed would actually results in a lower increase because the inflation in that industry has not been as substantial as it has been in the consumer goods. So this is not a, it's not a new contract. It's the same contract. The contract just provides for annual price adjustments based off of inflation and, and market.
Um, thank you for that. I'm gonna take a little minute here, and I don't generally speak first, but I'm going to on this one, if you'll bear with me. Um, as most of you may know, I spoke against the original contract back three years ago. I was not in favor of it. I didn't like it. I didn't think it was written well or was, was, was really handled properly. However, um, now I'm mayor and going through this whole thing, I have to understand right now that it's basically a contract that's been enforced for three years. Um, it has been voted on by a previous mayor and two previous councils on two earlier agreements. Um, and those two early agreements have written in them that that together the agreement and all prior amendments constitute the entire agreement between the parties and all terms and conditions uh, of that agreement remain in full force and effect. So, um, like it or not, um, number one, to throw it in the wind and all of a sudden say, oh, we're not gonna do this. And now we don't have anybody to run our wastewater plant. We don't have any, any pre figuring out what we're going to do would put this city in a huge mess. And not only that, it could put us into a breach of contract, a contract would cost us a ton of money legally. In my estimation, I'm gonna suck it up and I'm just gonna have to vote in favor of it, even though I don't like the contract originally, but you can bet that in after eighteen months, when this is up, we will start to then really run the numbers and we'll work through it through those next six months to figure out where we, as a council and a mayor, want to go. But to do anything other than that right now would be really a chaotic, in my opinion, a mess. So let's talk money. And I first saw this and just about dropped on the floor when I saw over a million dollars, but then I realized it is an eighteen-month contract. So I went down and broke it down by the month. And so from the very first original contract to the first amendment, did it, the co- the cost increased by three point five percent. It went up to six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. Now, I'm not including stuff for maintenance and the upgrades. Those we're gonna pay for whether they did it or we did it. So I'm just talking what we're paying Jacobs to run this plan. In the second amendment, okay, um, it went up to six hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and five dollars uh, for a year. And if you were to back this eighteen-month out back to a year, it is now gone up between second amendment and this one, five point two percent. So as you can see, with the, the Consumer Price Index pushing over seven percent, that this one's only going up five point two. That is still seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars and change for the year, but, uh, it doesn't look like it's really out of, uh, out of shape to what it should, should be. So that's my, uh, my two cents worth. Um, that's what your mayor says. I'm sucking it up and I'm gonna continue down this road with the, with the promise that in eighteen months, um, I'm bearing I'm still here. I may not be, um, but if I am, I will, uh, make the commitment to, uh, to due diligently bring everything towards every, to you and the rest of the citizens and, and we'll, uh, take a good, hard look at this before we do another, another one like this. So. All right. I've said my piece. Anyone else, please? Anna, go ahead.
I also agree with you, um, about this. I, I think everybody knows that I am not a big fan of the, uh, Jacobs contract. Never have been, will be. Um, however, bringing it, you know, in line with the fiscal year and, you know, budget and all of that makes sense. And we're almost through this contract, so we just need to trudge along and, um, when it comes up for renewal, uh, we do have an excellent city attorney now that I'm sure will look out for the city's best interest and the citizens' best interest. So, um, like you, I, I think we just have to suck it up and just muddle through.
Thank you. Joni?
I too. I'm not, um, a fan of the Jacobs contract. Actually, I had, um, argued against it in many ways, but I, I see that if we were to go against this, the financial disaster that would befall us would be much more than we need to deal with. Uh, I find it refreshing that we do have competent, um, law representation that will write us um, a much better contract, um, that was previously written because it was probably one of the poorest contracts I've ever seen. So, um, moving down the road, once we get past this contract, um, hopefully we will be able to negotiate something or figure some other route out that's gonna be more advantageous to the city. But right now, I think we just have to finish this contract out.
Any other hands? Uh, Mel, go ahead.
I also concur with, with you, Mayor, and Anne and Joni. Uh, I'm a businessman. I want to review it. I spoke to our attorney. Uh, it's the worst contract. There's no question about it. I mean, uh, people know this. We know this. You need to know. And I think the assumption, like, uh, Ken was saying, the assumptions being made that we are making a new contract. It's not. In business, you make a contract and you live by the contract. Uh, let me tell you, it's one of the worst. I don't know how was this negotiated, what kind of common sense was used. Uh, pisses me off. I'm very upset about it, but we have it now. And in the middle of the road, we can just decide to throw it out and that, and we have to deal with, you can just do this. Uh, for, for, for these people watching us, who want to know about this, we're doing what's right now. It's, we agree with you. It's a bad contract, but we promise we have a good, good council. We have a good attorney and a good, uh, city manager. And I think we can do much better next time, but we have to live with this. And we can't afford right now in the middle of this with the situation that we're dealing with, with employees, with, with cost control, with uh, having someone to renegotiate, do a contract in the middle of this. It's on, not, doesn't make sense. So we, we don't like it, but we have to live with it and hopefully we'll do a better, uh, job next time. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, you got Frank or Leslie?
Well, all, all I could say is, of course, I concur with what's been said to this point. Yeah, I think it's time to make a motion.
Okay. Uh, Leslie has anything? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve amendment number three to Jacob's Agreement for Operations Maintenance and Management Services.
I second.
I have a motion by Frank and a second by Mel to approve the number three Jacobs Agreement for Operation Maintenance and Management. Roll call, please, Ashley.
Councilmember Giacomo.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suede.
Aye.
Mayor Protimplin?
Hi.
Mayor Budge?
Hi. Motion passes six zero. Thank you all. I think we did our due deal, due job tonight. All right. Let's, uh, move on to number ten. Let me push it down. Here we go. So this is a discussion of possible approval of the contract. Another contract for architectural services with Albert A. Harp Hopper for City Hall. Much better contract, I hope, and a much happier one. So, um, I'm gonna leave this over to the city manager.
Um, and thank you, Mayor, and, uh, good evening. I guess this is my first real item of the night. Um, the, uh, that the, that the council, special council meeting that you held a week ago, you collectively decided to choose Albert Hopper as the architect and construction, uh, manager for the, uh, city hall. What you have before you tonight is basically, um, a standard AIA form contract uh, that, uh, most architects and engineers use for consulting services on construction projects. Uh, in this case, uh, it is no different. Um, so what I did when I received the contract from Mr. Hopper, I sent it up to Mr. Estes for review. And I'll just make a note that the, um, the contract as written, uh, the text that was written was approved or well, reviewed and approved basically by the city attorney can speak for himself if he wants. But that on page twenty-four of the contract, uh, Mr. Estes asked to, uh, on item four there at the bottom, bottom half of the page, uh, to add certain terms and conditions that are required, uh, by state statute for, uh, consulting contracts. Um, that language was added in the appropriate place, uh, sent back to Mr. Hopper and he has approved it. And I believe today he signed it and was planning to send it back. So, anyway, this contract has been reviewed, reviewed, modified and approved. And staff recommends that, uh, council approve the contract for architectural services with Mr. Hopper.
All right. Thank you for that. Questions, comments from the, okay, I'm gonna go to Anna first. Go ahead.
Uh, this is it's for seventy-eight thousand dollars. Isn't that, uh, higher than what it was before?
Um, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I believe that there was a sixty-five thousand dollar figure for architectural services. And the balance of that was for construction, uh, management.
Yes, a provision, yeah.
Now, that would be for him to be on the site during construction to make sure, uh, that the contractors do their job appropriately.
Yeah.
And, and it basically is standard procedure.
Thank you.
Okay, Joni, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I, I guess I want to, uh, direct these at Joe. I just want some things clarified. Actually, I have a few. So if anybody else wants to ask, I can wait. No, anybody else haven't? Okay.
You're right.
Okay, on page nine, when you go down to three point six, one, two, zero, in the contract, it says, um, architect be, um, nor shall the architect be responsible for the contractor's failure to perform the work in accordance with the, the document. Who is then responsible?
Contractor is responsible to follow the, the construction contract, the, the construction documents that the architect prepares. So essentially saying that the architect's not responsible if the contractor doesn't follow the construction documents that are prepared.
So that would mean we would have to then go after the contractor individually. Is that what that says?
If, if an issue came up, yeah, if the contractor didn't follow the construction documents, then we would go after the contractor and the contractor's bond. Um, but essentially that's just saying that you know, the architect can't be held responsible for what the contractor does if the contractor doesn't follow the, the drawings and plans and specifications that the architect prepares. That he's responsible for his work and, and the sufficiency of his work.
So in the, the last paragraph, it says that the architect is not required to make exhaustive and continuous onsite inspections, blah, 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 uh, reasonably keeping the owner reasonably. What would then deem reasonably? Is there a set amount or is that something that you decide upon, um, acceptance of the contract? Like, would that be Steve? And the architect then would agree as to what reasonable is? Is that how that works?
Joe, um, I can deal with that at least in part. During the course of, of preparing, uh, the, the design for the new building and preparing the construction documents and talking about how we're going to manage the project because there is a construction management, uh, component here. It's at that point in time where the city and the architect will establish the rules of engagement for what he's responsible for and, and how often he's responsible for it. Um, I plan simultaneously to have someone from city staff working directly uh, on the site as well to make reasonable visits. Not that I don't trust the architect so much, but that, um, I know from sometimes hard experience over many years that, uh, we are the best people to look out for ourselves. So he will have responsibility for it and so will we.
Second set, second set of eyes never hurts.
Oh, on page, let's see, ooh, page eleven. Um, on the very first paragraph, it says the architect shall review and take appropriate action on shop drawings and other, um, submittals related to the work design. Then it says the architecture view shall be for the limited purpose of checking for conformance. Um, architect shall be entitled to rely upon and shall not be responsible for the adequacy and accuracy of services, et cetera, et cetera. Who is with that? Then again, fall back on the, um, contractor or is that fall on us?
No, that, that again falls back on the, the contractor because the, the way this, this is done. So the architect will prepare all the, the drawings and specifications for the construction of the facility. Then it goes out to bid. We hire a contractor. Uh, the architect then remains as, as an overseer of that, uh, construction uh, project. And essentially during the construction, there's gonna be certain submittals that get submitted to the architect for approval, whether those be for different types of materials, whether they be for, uh, you know, types of toilets, types of wall, uh, electrical fixtures, all those different things. This is essentially saying that the architect by reviewing those submittals doesn't, you know, the architect isn't responsible for the, uh, the, the, the performance or the design of those specific submittals. Just that, for example, you have to submit for a, a, a toilet for however many bathrooms. It meets the specifications of whether, how it's designed, whether it's low flow or no flow or different things like that. There's so many different manufacturers that, that it's up to the, the contractor to submit a submittal with the spec sheets for those different items from the different manufacturers. So it's, it's another uh, legalese way of, of saying that the, the architect will, uh, will review and take appropriate action on the shop drawings and the submittals. But again, he, he's not certifying the, uh, the details of, of those individual items uh, manufactured by the, by the, the other companies. So ultimately, yeah, the, the contractor is responsible for construction means and methods. And if there is an issue, we hold the contractor responsible. If there's a design issue, then that's when we would go back and, and say, okay, architect, this wasn't designed properly. It can't be constructed the way that it's been designed. You now have to stand up and and redo and, and adjust your work. And so he's responsible for his design and the contractor is responsible for the construction means and methods.
That kind of, I guess, takes us to the next question. When you go down, uh, it's talking about changes to work. Is there a specific limitation on, uh, change orders? Does it have to be a specific amount in this or will anything that, that changes have to go through a change order with, um, the city, with Steve? I'm assuming Steve would be the, the lead person, right?
Right. And that will be determined based off of the construction contract when, when that is. Essentially what this is saying is that, you know, one, once the building is designed, that any changes in that design that are requested by the owner are going to incur additional costs and fees as a, as a change order for that design. Uh, whereas if it's a, if it's a construction-related change order, that will be addressed with the contractor depending on the circumstances of what that, that potential change order may be.
Okay, um, there was a couple more. Sorry, my cat just ate the paper. Um, oh, okay, I talked about reasonable adjustments. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm on page sixteen, down on six point three, in preparing estimates of the cost of work, blah, blah, blah. Then says contract documents to recommend reasonable adjustments in the program, uh, program and scope of the project. Again, how specific is reasonable or is that gonna be determined when you sit down with, um, the, the architect and construction people?
Yeah, again, that, that's determined at the time of that, that construction bidding process as to, you know, for example, we, we get the design and drawings now, but we don't go out to bid on construction for a year or a year and a half or, or what, what it may be. The, there are going to be cost differentials and changes and things. So it's just, he's preparing an estimate of the cost of work now. That's not a guarantee that, 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 that cost estimate is, is going to be one hundred percent accurate. They, they use those, again, legalese words to avoid a ton of liability. They, they can do the best they can, but remember again, architects are not contractors. They're, you know, the, a contractor is the one who's really gonna know when he goes to bid this project, what it's going to cost. Because at that point, he's going to source out the materials and the man hours and stuff in the market at that time.
So with, uh, six point five, which is just down from that, if at any time the architect estimates the cost of work to exceed the owner's budget, then the, um, owner has to work with them to accept recommendations. Um, is that gonna be pretty much in flux technically with the market then, right?
Uh, somewhat, but essentially what that is saying is that, you know, we, we provide the architect with, with our, our estimated budget. We think this, you know, the city has three million dollars to spend on the, the construction of a city hall. Design and, and provide us with construction plans for a facility that, that meets those needs. And then during that design process, there'll be discussions with, with city on different aspects of that design, you know, do we have a room here? Do we have a bathroom here? Different things with that. And ultimately, you know, then once, once those design plans are at a certain percentage, he's able then to provide a cost estimate. And then if we look at that cost estimate and say, okay, because there has been a substantial increase of this, that, you know, this is what he estimates the project will cost, then we can enter into discussions or, or revisions to do, uh, what's known as, as, uh, value engineering to where we can engineer something differently to save costs to still get what we need and what we want and still fit in within our budget.
Okay, I guess I have one last question. It's actually two questions in one. Um, when on page nineteen and on page twenty, it's talking about time. Um, like for, for instance, if either one of us bail on the contract, uh, we only have to give seven day notice. Yet on page twenty, it talks about, um, certificates shall be, uh, submitted to the architect for review, uh, at least fourteen days prior. Why is one so, why isn't it so less of a time? Why just seven days? Uh, to, to let you know if they're, um, going to terminate or suspend services. That was on page nineteen, article nine, termination and suspension. It just seems like a very short period of time, I guess. Maybe that's why. Seven days? Does that make, am I making?
But that, that, that termination is, is contingent upon, uh, certain things occurring first, whether there's a, a breach. It's not just, I can terminate with seven days notice. There has to be a, a breach or an issue that's raised that hasn't been cured. And then there's, uh, seven days, you know, it says if, uh, you know, it also provides that the owner can sus- suspend the project for more than ninety days. For example, you know, last year was a good year to, to use as an example of you never know what's gonna happen. COVID comes in, shuts things down. You can't move forward with certain things. You have to put things on hold. That just basically says there's certain circumstances where, where the architect can provide written notice uh, of termination. And then, uh, then it also provides that the owner can provide written notice of, of termination under certain circumstances. And then it gives a, a cure period. And then I think the fourteen day period that you're referencing and ten point
Yeah, I think it was on page twenty. I just threw my favorite word.
Yeah, it's on page twenty, ten point four, the owner plus the architect execute certificates. The proposed languages certificates shall be submitted to the architect for review at least fourteen days prior to the requested dates of execution. That's just part of the miscellaneous provisions. It's, it's saying, okay, if we give you certificates, these, these have to be executed and returned in a timely period.
I was just curious why there was the, you know, the difference in, you know, the timeframes.
Yeah, and I could tell you it was not less than seven days written notice. Um, and again, this is an AIA, uh, standard form contract. It's used nationwide. Uh, so it's, it's used by architects and engineers throughout the, throughout the country. And that's why we, we go through and, uh, can provide some revisions and stuff. Sometimes they're revised based off of state statute with regard to prompt pay uh, act requirements and things like that, but this one complies with that. Um, so yeah, under the, the termination, there, there are certain circumstances that would only certain circumstances that would allow for even a notice of termination. It's not just the architect can't terminate this based off of convenience like the, the city has that op- option.
Thank you.
All right, uh, do I see any other hands? Anna, go ahead.
I guess my concern here is on design changes. Now you said that if there were design changes, that would be uh, a cost that the city would have to absorb, correct?
That's after a certain point of completion of the plans and specifications. So there's going to be meetings prior to the, these, the design and the, the plans being prepared. Once those plans hit like a sixty to eighty percent completion portion, if the city comes back and says, you know what, we want this room moved. We want this room bigger. We want this room smaller. We want another entry over here. We wanna add a bathroom there. That's gonna incur additional fees because you're already at a point in the, in the process where the plans are subs- of, to a substantial point where now he has to expend additional time and effort to go back and completely revise that area or that section of the, of the project.
Okay, uh, so this question is for Steve then. The mockup that we got from Mr. Hopper is not the final, uh, design that he's going to propose or send in to us, is it? Because there were, I know we were concerned with, um, the way some of those were. And I know that that was, you know, the, the first submittal that he did, you know, a couple of years ago, whenever it was. Um, so how how does that process work then?
Hey, so, uh, thanks, Anna. Um, the, yeah, in, in short, uh, what each architect submitted, uh, during that period, uh, were all concepts. Okay? Those were, those were their concepts of what they thought we might think is a, a good idea. Um, all bets are off at this point. Okay, you, if you sign this, or excuse me, approve this agreement uh, and mayor sign Uh, and mayor signs it tomorrow, uh, then everything starts over from scratch, so. Um, you know, his, and and I don't want to try and explain his approach because. Um, I I don't know wh- what his approach was other than it looks very similar to the building that we used to have. And so um, that was basically giving you a hint of what he might think. Is the best way to go about replacing the old building. Uh, as far as process is concerned, um, we will begin the process almost immediately of starting to. Basically, number one, uh, the wi- without knowing what the space requirements are for each department that will occupy the building. Uh, you can't design anything, so that's going to be job one. Uh, the architect is going to meet with me, uh, and then he's going to meet with the department heads. And in some cases, he's going to meet with both of us at the same time. Uh, and what we're going to do is we're going to go over the space requirements. And we're going to see, first of all, what the departments who occupy the building need. Um, and then, once we figure all that out, then we're going to see if if we've got any space left in the building. Uh, for little things like um vaults and storage and utilities. Um, and then we'll go back and we'll do it all over again. Uh, making uh what the departmental needs are fit the space that we have. So that will be a fairly exhaustive process and that will be what we do right from the beginning. Before we can start designing cornices and windows and all that other stuff, we got to figure out how much space we actually need.
Okay, go ahead, Anna, finish.
Okay, so I I do want to say again that, you know, I thank you for moving this project forward. It's been sitting on the back for. Too long and I'm I'm really pleased that we are moving forward. Um, I want to say that I have every bit of confidence in you in overseeing everything. Um, and and I know that this building. Means a lot to you, I I know that, um, it means a lot to a lot of us as well, so I know that. That it will be the best thing down the road, I I. Still have to say that I'm I'm really concerned um. With the uh. Difference in, I guess, the 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 bids, um, because the lowest bid is not always the most responsible bid. Um, and I know that that's not, you know, you know, here nor there at this point in time. But I will say that I'm putting my confidence in you.
Well, and Anna, I appreciate that, um, a vote of confidence. Um, I I believe that we're making sound decisions at this point and you know, uh. On April fourteenth, before I came back to work on April fifteenth, we discussed this building. Um, as a group, not all of you were there at the time, um, but uh. Uh, you know, I consider that of of of. I consider an an adequate city hall um to be a cornerstone in our community. And we have missed so much in the last four, four and a half years now. Uh, by not having um, not just a home, uh, but a community gathering place and a center for government. And so, and yeah, I take some. Um, you know, a a little bit personally, that was, you know, the first eight years of. My time here was spent in that building, I know, I I I know how much importance you put on it too. Uh, you and I have talked about that quite a bit, um, and I think that, uh, you know, at at this point in time. Uh, w- we have made certain decisions that are allowing this project to move forward. And uh, so um, I'm grateful for that, I I appreciate everyone's assistance on that. Um, some of the old hands like me will be involved in it and interested in it on a daily basis. From now forward, we've got some new hands. Um, on the staff that have some talent that will bring a lot to uh the the part where we build the building and uh. And we don't want mistakes and um, w- w- the only mistakes that we'll accept will be the ones we make ourselves. And we'll uh, we're going to do our best not to make any ourselves, so. Um, you know, and I think that, uh, you know, just just to touch and and I I don't know the answer, but I think I I know how. Uh, because, yeah, there was a significant difference in um, the amount that was proposed by different architects. Um, I I'll just answer that question by saying that in in this particular case, I don't think it was about money.
Uh, Johnny, I saw one more comment. No, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, there was a question that popped up and it was, does the cost of the architect contract cover the civil and landscape plans as well? As along with a vertical plan set for both construction documents and preliminary package submittal? My answer to that. And what I understood and maybe I misunderstood it is no, because there was that one page that had a lot of other. Costs that are going to be incurred down the road, is that true or does that include that?
I'm not exactly sure I understand your question, but the cut uh, the proposal speaks for itself.
Right, it's it's one of the, it got put in on, um, it was a comment made by one of the public and they're just wanting to know. If um, costs are incurred in this contract. And again, that's, you know, one of my major concerns, the contract sounds very sound and I do have faith in you overseeing it. Um. I do still have my um, my concerns and I'll be more than happy to tell anybody who wants to sit down and talk to me about it instead of, you know, voicing it on social media. But um, I just hope that um. It does go smoothly and I do have faith in you overseeing it and being the straw boss that you can be, so.
Um, a- again, thank you for your vote of confidence, um, I I just now saw the social media post that you just referred to. And uh, the uh, the the civil is included. And um, the landscape plans, well, um, take a look at, uh, take a look at our job site, okay? Um, the landscape plan includes uh grading the land and planting grass. So it's not really a big factor unless you want to do more, but um, you know, but here again, if you want to do more, you're going to have to incur more expense. But I mean, I always loved having green grass in the front yard when I worked there before.
Especially during the monsoon.
Well, uh, one thing that I'm going to ask to have designed in the project, just as an aside. Is w- w- we're going to have some, w- we're going to have some water barrels, now they're going to collect water and so. Uh, even when it's not raining, we'll have a supply of water that we can use at least for a while to keep the lawn green.
Um.
Thanks.
Yeah, not to belabor this issue, but um. I also would like to be involved a bit just as your mayor because there is going to be staff and all their needs, but then there's, we as council have our needs too, you know, what do we want? So another, and I'm asking this nicely, and that doesn't mean it has to go this way, but. If you have suggestions, bring them to me, I I don't think this is a, would be a a breach of uh. Of, you know.
Actually, Mayor, um, th- there there will be an opportunity for the council members to get a firsthand. Look and provide some comment, um, you know, uh, I'll I'll go back to the the comment about. Uh, we need a mayor's office, well, uh, you know, uh, based on a concept, there wasn't a mayor's office there, but there was always a mayor's office. Contemplated, uh, you're 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 listening to a former mayor and uh, so I understand. Uh, only the usefulness, but the need for that kind of kind of thing, and it needs to be close to where the people are, so. Um.
Well, all I was trying to get at Steve in the end was that. There's going to have to be compromise because there's seven of us and we may not, we all want something different or whatever, so. Let's all just work together and realize we're all not going to get everything we want, but I'm sure we're going to get a lot of what we do want, so. That's what I was getting at is we all kind of come together and if you want to throw your ideas at me and I'll. I I'll help run them along with whatever as far as the council part of it goes.
Oh, I, you know, I feel confident that everybody's going to get an opportunity, uh, we're going to get what we need, okay? Um, to the d- degree that we give what we want on top of that. Um, you know, bear in mind, this is not my first rodeo with building a city hall. And uh, believe me, there was a lot of back and forth and um, there was a lot of jockeying going on because. Even a city with money has limitations and so. Um, you know, we're dealing with uh, a lot more limitations financially with what we can do. And uh, I think for those of us who spent any part of our life in the. Um. Uh, in in the building that burned down, um, um, we very much appreciated what we had, except maybe for the heat and the air conditioning. Um, but uh, these are chances to improve um upon that as well. And uh, and also to uh, make sure that the public has the opportunity to. Come to council meetings, be able to access the building. Um, easily and uh, regardless of whether you're able bodied or have uh some kind of affliction that. Uh, you you need some, uh, you need some assistance getting into the building, uh, we actually, uh, the old building was very good at that and. Uh, so that's something that we're going to uh, try and incorporate. An old idea, bring it to the new building, uh, so that uh, anybody who wants to visit city hall for any reason will be able to do so.
All right, any other? Comments? Then I'll just move to approve the contract with Architectural Services with Albert and Hopper uh, for City Hall.
A second.
And a motion by myself and a second by Mel to approve the contract with Al Hopper. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jacomino? I'm sorry.
Hi.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes six zero. It's unanimous, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, um. We'll move on to our last item, item number eleven, this is a discussion of poss- possible acceptance of the resignation of council member Lewis Pollock. And discussion and recommend recommendations for scheduling to fill his vacancy. Um, this is under my name, um. Uh, we will make a motion to approve his resignation, uh, I've been looking forward uh, on the calendar. And you know, we cannot uh, appoint before fifteen days or must before thirty one days. Um, I kind of like the way we did it last time, uh, with. When Mel got on board, which was we had a special session, then try, and then. A few days after that, he was was able to be seated at uh, the next council meeting, so. Um, I'm looking right now to uh, hold a special session on February tenth, everybody here mark that out, I'm sure you'll want to be there for that. Um, and that way, uh, all applications, uh, hopefully we'll be getting them out. Uh, uh, the call for app any replacements tomorrow or the next day, for sure. And uh, they'll have to be in by no later than noon on February seventh, on that Monday before. And uh, we'll accept epic um, letters of interest, I should say, until that point. Uh, then, of course, the uh, I believe our next council meeting on is the fifteenth after that. And that would be when uh, this person we chose would be seated, so. That would be the uh, schedule for this, um, that would put us just uh. Thirty days when they got appointed and uh, about. You know, four or five days before that when we uh, when we choose, so. Is there any objection or comments on that?
No.
Yeah, I know, I kind of ran it, didn't I? All right, um, we'll take, uh, I'll take a motion that uh. On uh, accept the resignation, anybody want to make one?
I move that we accept the resignation of council member Lewis Pollock. And move that we set a date of February tenth, twenty twenty two, to appoint a replacement council member for this position.
Again.
Okay, motion by Anna and a second by Leslie to accept the resignation of council member Polly and set a date of February tenth. Uh, for appointment for replacement.
You want to set the time for that meeting as well?
Um, anybody have a preference, I don't want to push it in anybody's work schedule, six or?
Six is good.
What is the date again?
The tenth, Thursday.
It's a Thursday, February tenth.
The Thursday.
Oh, huh, yeah, whatever, um, I'll be in surgery.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
We can't push it much further forward. Or back, all right.
We can catch up for Zoom.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, see how good you look in a hospital bed, no, I'm just kidding.
I might be home because it's a.
Oh, oh, no, okay, so let's uh, set the time at six for February tenth and uh. Uh, all those in favor of accepting this resignation signify by saying aye.
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 Posed nay? Very none? Term of the eyes have it, so moved. And we will now move to city manager's report, if there's one.
Yes, there is, thank you very much, I'll try to keep it as brief as possible, um. First of all, just an update um, on the sale of the Hillcrest apartment building. Um, we are in the process right now of showing the property to anyone who is indicating an interest in purchasing that building. Um, we have, uh, to to date, we have actually shown it to two uh, different potential developers. Uh, we have talked to one or two additional developers and. Um, we feel very confident that on February first, uh, when the sealed bids come in. Um, that we will actually get bids and uh, just a reminder that uh. The uh, uh, minimum bid was set at six hundred thousand dollars. So uh, I'm feeling very confident, February first also happens to be a council meeting. Uh, we can't act on it on February first, but um, we can at least give you an update on it uh, at the meeting that night, so. Uh, good things if, you know, here again, I know it's a big building. Uh, but if anybody has anybody they know is interested, uh, they need to get ahold of Doug Taylor and they need to do it right away, so. We don't have a lot of time left, so that's one. Um, just a reminder, um, next week, Wednesday, Thursday. And Friday is the uh, Arizona City Managers Association Conference. Um, which I normally attend annually, um, except for last year when covid hit, uh, decided to stay home. And uh, so anyway, I'm not sure today's much better, but uh, but we'll be going anyway, so I will be. Out of the city those three days, but I will still be available uh, by phone. Um, and then uh, now that you have uh, accepted Mr. Pollock's resignation. Um, I I just want to say a word. Um, I think many of you are are very familiar with Lou's uh, and my relationship. Because much of it played out on Zoom and uh, and in in council meetings, um. Uh, while uh, we went at each other uh, more than once, um. I I think it was more over policy than personality, um, although sometimes it may not have seemed that way. Um, but as the time progressed, uh, uh, and keep in mind that I was also his boss because he was a war three councilman. And uh, as time progressed, I think we found a comfort zone that allowed us to. Uh, become more productive and in fact, um, bring about some assistance to people. That he represented uh, in a very positive way, so. Um. And uh, and and I guess we ended up our relationship and I'll just quote Lou, uh, referring to me what at my, at my. Uh, last evaluation that uh, I can take a punch and I can throw one too. So I I guess we did enough sparring that will, Lou, we're going to call it even. And uh, and my friend will appreciate your time here and uh, don't be a stranger, so, anyway, thank you. That's all I have, sir, except for one thing, uh, just wanted to, just wanted to, just, just a small thing, just want to let you know that. Uh, today is my wife's forty eighth wedding anniversary.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Why your wedding?
Yeah, and well, I'm at a meeting, so she's the one celebrating today, so.
Takes two to be mayor, no.
I don't, I, I wish I had fifty bucks for every uh, wedding anniversary where I spent at a meeting.
Yeah, I, I do too for every, never mind.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for that and uh, so we'll go on to council comments, we have one here by, by Johnny.
Um, it kind of goes in in with what we started the meeting with, um, I just wanted to take a moment. Um, to honor and recognize one of Bisbee's outstanding people, as you know, we lost Snooty Borwick. Recently, but what many of you probably don't know is how many. recently, but what many of you probably don't know is how many lives she touched and how much she has done for the city of Bisbee and its residents throughout her life. I have known Snooty all my life. In fact, she's been a second mother to me. Her children are my siblings as our lives have been intertwined forever. My mom and Snooty played commercial ball together and raised their kids side by side. Snooty was a homeroom mother, making treats and decorations for Glenn and Lisa's classes until they were older. I remember Snooty and my mom as den mothers for the Cub Scouts, making bolo ties for Glenn and Charlie out of turkey neckbones. They were pretty cool. Snooty was the originalbury Gulch Days organizer when it was all about Bisbee history and not about the bars up the gulch. Snooty organized a bunch of six to sixteen year old kids to reenact Bisbee history on Main Street. Only Snooty would give a bunch of kids real six shooters to replay Bisbee's glorious past. Interestingly, how her bunch knew how to handle guns with blanks, whereas many Hollywood adults don't have a clue. From shootouts on Main Street to traveling the parade circuits through the state, performing as Bisbee chamber aides, she spread the word about Bisbee utilizing Bisbee kids. She was the pom pom sponsor, my sponsor, school secretary, and even a councilwoman. For Snooty, it was all about the kids of Bisbee, Arizona, and her number one love, the town of Bisbee. To call Snooty Bisbee's number one cheerleader is an understatement. She knew Bisbee's history inside and out. And whenever I needed info like, oh, land ownership, she was the go-to girl. I miss my morning texts of daily Arizona and Bisbee history, but above all, I miss her friendship. Snootz was the best, and I will never forget her daily greetings. Hey girlfriend. To those of you who did not know her, I am sorry for your loss and Bisbee's loss. So to Snooty, I raise the pick. I sing onward Bisbee in her honor. Thanks.
Thank you, Joni.
Thank you, Joni.
Thank you.
All right, everyone. Made up almost nine thirty. That wasn't too bad, I guess. Thank you, everybody. And let's do it in German. Frank.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Frank and a second by Leslie to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pos nay? Hearing none, the eyes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dean, everybody.
Be safe.
Careful going home, Joe.
Yep.
Yeah, you're, you're up there by my house.
I see her at Ken's.